Tuesday, November the thirteenth, two thousand and twelve, Colorado.
Barfield, Brown, Carol, Presine, Daughery, McManus, Midnight, Mizell.
Here.
Thank you.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance and man standing clear.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear heavenly Father, we come tonight thanking you for the blessings that you have given each and every one here. We pray, dear heavenly Father, that you will be with our community as we go through some trying times, dear heavenly Father, with the events that's happened in the last month. Be with the families, dear heavenly Father. Not only be with the sick, dear heavenly Father, but be with the caregivers. Be with our armed service personnel, dear heavenly Father, not only on foreign grounds, but here in the United States. As the holidays, dear heavenly Father, come, guide and direct their lives, bring them safely home to their families. We ask in each decision that be made here tonight, be for the veterans of the community, dear heavenly Father, be for everyone above us. We ask in our precious name, amen. Motion to approve the minutes of the last regular council meeting. Motion made by Mr. Presine, seconded by Mr. McManus. Call roll, please.
Barfield, Brown, Carol, Presine, Daughery, McManus, Midnight, Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
First item on the agenda, citizenry. Mr. Wills actually asked to speak for the council.
I would just like to take a moment to thank you all for supporting the civil war event that was held by Friends of Fort Massac a couple of weeks ago. And it, of course, we did not draw a huge crowd, but there were about probably a hundred and fifty people there in the daytime, plus several hundred there for the cruise on the river, on the Veloce, Cincinnati. But the people who did come out all seemed very interested. We had some very good speakers about the civil war in this area. And of course, I guess the main event for most people was the what we did to kind of reenact the soldiers being inducted into the Union Army, just like they were there at Fort Massac. I guess we were probably certainly within a few feet of where they had been, it has been a hundred and fifty years ago. And to have people who their great grandfather, great great uncle, or somebody served in the service at that time, they, most families don't have anything, you know, medals or anything to show. So we gave everybody a certificate showing that they were inducted in honor of their ancestor. I don't know if this is something that anybody in the community will want to do next year and again to see how much it could grow. But if not, we did have a nice event, and of course, it was not a big budget event, as you all know. But we only could have done it with some money through you all and the tourism commission. But I just wanted to be sure and thank you all for that.
The people I talked to, I did enjoy it. They seemed to have a good time. It's kind of a specialty type thing. It's one of those things where you really gotta, you either really like it, or you really don't care much about it.
Right, and we lucked out with the weather. It was a little chilly and a little breezy, but no rains that could have really hampered the event.
Right. Thank you. First item on the mayor's, excuse me, is there anything else in under the mayor's report? We have a presentation by Julian.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm Julian Jackman. I'm with Economic Development Resources. Try and keep this brief for everybody tonight. We have two presentations, both on the area that we've been working on, studying with city staff up by the interstate. The first one we'll talk about is the TIF area. It's called the Interstate North TIF area. Everybody should have a study in their packets. It looks somewhat similar to this guy. It's an eligibility study for the Interstate North Taxing and Financing Redevelopment Project area. In order to view of the area, it's the area shown here, outlined in red. This map is also in your studies right behind page one. This should probably look pretty similar to people. We studied this area before, probably within the last year. Originally, it was just that portion of the area north of Fort, sorry, north of forty-five. It originally included some of the farmland west of Devers Road. Since that time, the property owners west of Devers have decided to start farming their property, which for all intents and purposes made that area ineligible to include in our TIF. As such, we took the opportunity to change the boundary of our area. And while we took out the area west of Devers, we took in some of the properties south of forty-five. Some of the undeveloped parcels, some of the areas that were, that we would like to see developed. That includes the property in front of Woodhaven, owned by Horn Trout, as well as the corner property where the old peeling station used to be, as well as the hotel motel on the south side of forty-five. So like I said, we did a presentation on this area before. We did find that the area last time was eligible for TIF financing because of a combination of factors that are defined in the statute. After we redrew the boundary, it included those areas south of forty-five. Once again, we found that the area is eligible to be included in a TIF area by the Illinois State Statute. We found that based on a couple of different things. One, we examined the area's two parts, if I can call it that. One of the parts is the developed area within the TIF. That is largely all the area north of forty-five, where we have BP, the Metropolis Inn, the Antique Mall, the Faber Cat, the Residence up on Devers, Super A, the Pizza Hut, also on the south side where the bank is, as well as the Motel Six. That's our developed area. We also included a vacant area, which is the area, let's just call it south of forty-five, west of Devers, where these largely undeveloped properties are. We examined each of those two areas, the developed and the vacant area. We found that both areas are eligible for taxing for financing. That's because of a combination of factors that are outlined in the statute. Just for an example, the developed area is eligible because of a combination of factors, specifically deterioration, structures below minimum code, lack of ventilation, light or sanitary facilities, lack of community planning, and lack of growth and equalized assessed value. Pretty much what those mean is that some of the barriers are, some, sorry, some of the buildings are deteriorating in a physical condition. Stuff is cracking, stuff is crumbling. We also found that some of the buildings out there are below minimum code. Maybe it's a wiring issue, a sign issue, lighting issue, something of that sort. And like in the value, we found that the area within the red outline is growing at a rate, at a rate less than the remainder of the city for that same time period. That meaning that the value within this area is not growing as fast as the rest of the city is. Same thing goes for the area that is currently undeveloped. So we had to find that each of those factors is present within this area. I think everybody knows, but TIF works for incremental property tax. We put the TIF in place, and as we put the TIF in place, the assessed value of the property is set. As development happens within the area, the property value of the area grows, and the tax is paid on the incremental value goes towards a fund that the city controls, and we can put back into the area for development and redevelopment of the area. We're doing two programs tonight. This is just the first one. This is for the TIF. We're also doing a business district, which I'll go into next. But if anybody has any questions on the TIF, I can take them now. Okay. Next up is the business district. It is the exact same boundary as the TIF. Everybody should also have this study in their packets. We also examined this area last time around. It was the same area as the TIF, and during the meeting we had with the city, we took out those areas west of Devers, the now farmland, and we included the area south of forty-five. The factors are different in the statute. It's the same kind of tool. It has a different revenue stream, but it's the same kind of public-private partnership tool. But there's a different set of factors you have to find in the statute in order for it to be eligible. Those factors include deterioration of site improvements, unsanitary or unsafe conditions, conditions which endanger life or property by fire or other causes, some conditions like that. And you have to make a finding after you find those factors that those, the combination of those factors makes this area, one, an economic liability, two, a social liability, three, an economic underutilization of the area, or four, a menace to the public health, safety, morals, and welfare. Using the factors that we found within the area, we did find that it is eligible to be a business district. Like the TIF, the TIF generates its money based on personal, not personal, property value. The business district makes its money off of sales tax. We currently have a business district in the city. This would be the second one, I believe, that we'll have. Business district works as you can impose an up to one percent additional sales tax on the sale of general merchandise within the district. Like the TIF, that money is collected by the city, and it is used to put money back into the district to help out with development and redevelopment. We can put that into public infrastructure if we want to fix up some roads, sidewalks, sewers, water, whatever. Or we can put it into private stuff. If we have somebody that comes up and says, we want to put a big old building right here on Woodhaven, or right in front of Woodhaven, and they say it's a million dollar project, we can help them out and give them, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth to help them with the project, just throwing some numbers out there. So you can help out with private projects and also put money back into public infrastructure, so it helps in both ways. So it's the same boundary, it's the two different projects, but on the same boundary. The two projects and the two districts work hand in hand together. You can have them both overlap, and you can use monies from each tool, from each program, together for individual projects. So you can use, for one project, you can use part TIF and part business district, because one makes its money off of property tax, and one makes its money off of sales tax. They're two independent programs and two different sources of money. Again, this is just a presentation of the eligibility of the area. We found that the area outlined in red and described in your studies is eligible to be a business district, just like we found that the area in red is eligible to be a TIF. The next step of the process is to accept these studies that everybody has in front of you, place them on file, and make them available for public inspection, and then authorize us, the EDR, to proceed with completing the plan. The plan for each project will be a document that outlines how much money we're looking to raise with each tool and what projects we're looking to do, what public infrastructure we want to improve, what types of projects we want to attract. And then we use those documents to finally adopt each program. I think that's pretty much it on the eligibility of this one. Does anybody have any questions about the business district? Okay, yeah, I'll be here if anybody has any questions about either of them.
There's Ned, wasn't it?
Well, I thought he did an excellent job explaining how these two work together. That's one of the problems that oftentimes I have, is conflicting ideas. That was a great presentation. They do fit together perfectly for us.
And Julian does a great job with Chad. He's, Julian and Gene have been a tremendous help in bringing Chad up as our zoning person and things. They spent numerous hours, numerous telephone calls, back and forth each week and stuff like that, to aid us in a lot of different things, to help Chad in his work. And having Gene and Julian actually relieves a little bit of the answers and questions from Tricia and Rick. And they've done a great job with us all together. They've done a tremendous job, so we do thank you very much.
Thanks, Mayor.
First item on the agenda, motion to accept the eligibility study, place them on file, and make available for the public inspection.
So moved.
Second. Just pick your voice. It all comes from that side of the table, so just.
Presine and Carol. Presine and Carol. That wasn't you, it was Midnight and Carol.
It was these two here.
Okay, I'm doing Midnight.
Motion made by Mr. Midnight, seconded by Mr. Carol. Call roll, please.
Barfield, Brown, Carol, Presine, Daughery, McManus, Midnight, and Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item, motion to authorize EDR to proceed with completion of the Interstate North TIF redevelopment plan and Interstate North Business District Plan.
So moved.
Seconded. Moved by Mr. Midnight. Seconded by Mr. Carol. Any discussion? Call roll, please.
Barfield, Brown, Carol, Presine, Daughery, McManus, Midnight, and Mizell. Thank you.
Next item. Motion to accept expenditure approval of five thousand dollars to McBride's for repairs on a unit forty-five GMC bucket truck for the light department.
Seconded.
Moved by Mr. McManus. Seconded by Mr. Barfield. I'm going to circulate these down to tables. Each one of there's several different one of these. If you would just pass them around, pick out your signature and stuff on it, and there's three of them on there, so.
Billy, is this the same truck that we authorized about a month ago to do forty-five, forty-seven hundred dollars worth?
We've got two different, different trucks.
Is this the same one, though?
No, it's a different truck. And there's expenditures for different ones in there. And then at the last Waterline Street, we actually had that, McBride's had it, they called back. We had another problem, so there won't be an expenditure on that to come out of the committee to actually go ahead and fix it while it was up there. So, and I don't know exactly how much it is, Mr. Presine, but and I do have some of the paperwork and stuff like that on it in here. Yes, call roll, please.
Barfield, Brown, Carol, Presine, Daughery, McManus, Midnight, and Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item, motion to accept expenditure approval of one thousand seven thirty-nine to Jasper Engines and Transmissions for Dodge two thousand Ram Water Department Truck. There is an expenditure going across the table there for that one. We actually got, I think, three competitive quotes to have it put in. After we looked at all that, we actually bought it and had our men put it in, so.
I will make the motion.
Seconded. Motion made by Mr. Barfield, seconded by Mr. Mizell. Call roll, please.
Barfield, Brown, Carol, Presine, Daughery, McManus, Midnight, and Mizell. Thank you.
Next item, motion to accept expenditure approval of one thousand nine ten eighty-five to Parpa Refrigeration for the purchase of air conditioner at the, it actually says the Colt Building. That is a misprint. It's the old fire station and police.
I will make the motion.
And there is an expenditure for that going around the table. Motion by Mr. Barfield. Seconded. By Mr. McManus.
Was it air out, or was it heat and air out?
No, it was air. No, it is heating, it was the same.
I started saying, is it just air? Why didn't we wait until like spring, and then that would extend our warranty another three months? Because I don't see us using this type of weather there too much.
We, it was about a month ago. I mean, that's, I don't know what the date on that expenditure was. On which one?
This one here.
Yeah, there is, I think it's on that sheet. There is the three competitive bids attached to, yes, it is, Mr. Mizell's got it now. You will see three quotes attached to that sheet. Okay, we've got that one. Call roll, please.
Barfield, Brown, Carol, Presine, Daughery, McManus, Midnight, and Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item, motion to accept payment to utility service equipment in the amount of five thousand five hundred repairs to the light department standby truck. That's the one there that we actually had, and the next one is on the other one that we actually approved.
I'll make my motion.
Motion by Mr. Mizell. Seconded.
All right, utility services and equipment, was that from like certification of aerial, or was?
It was things to do with the boom, safety issues that actually we can't operate. At one time, I believe it was two weeks ago, we had one operating bucket truck in the city. The only thing is, is we had two men working that week that could operate it. So it just is one of those things where we had, Keith was on vacation, Dwayne was gone. We had, and one of those weeks, we actually had two guys gone to the light rodeo training down in Alabama, and it just so happened, that was the week that we had the big storms. And I M E A put out a news bulletin to see, you know, if we was going to be able to send anybody to help with the emergencies. And Rick and I thought maybe we might put out and see if somebody could come down here and help us, so. But anyway, it was just an unusual situation where everything seemed like it went at one time. But we do probably need to, next year, budget time, we probably do need to put it on there to replace one of the older trucks. Of course, they're, right now, the little truck that Bobby, and that's one of the biggest expenditures here, that's the real small truck that we use in the backyards and stuff like that. The men tell me now that that truck is actually a better truck than it was when it was brand new. Now, we've had problems with that truck ever since it's been purchased, but anyway, now they're all up and working good, so. Yes, call roll, please.
Barfield, Brown, Carol, Presine, Daughery, McManus, Midnight, and Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item, motion to accept payment to Wayne Supply Company, amount of seven thousand four thirteen ninety-eight for repairs to unify a forty-five bucket truck. That's actually the one that the expenditure for the five thousand dollars. Actually, after they got up there, they tore it down, and quite a bit more was wrong with it. We actually went ahead and fixed that, so now that truck's up and running.
So all the trucks are back?
All the trucks are back and in service. Everything's been safety issued and stuff like that, so we're all under compliance again.
I'll make the motion.
Seconded. And it even makes it a little bit worse because they, those are specialty items. You can't just have every place work on them. It has to be somebody certified and qualified, and because of the hydraulics and things on them, and I believe they pretty well know that, too. Motion made and seconded, call roll, please.
Barfield, Brown, Carol, Presine, Daughery, McManus, Midnight, and Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
I do appreciate everybody's consideration and cooperation in getting all those fixed, and I know the men do, too. Mayor, since the farts you did hear, could I ask a question on our letter truck? Where, is it?
It went up yesterday.
Oh.
They're working on it today and tomorrow, hopefully haven't done by the end of the week. The reserve truck made it back last night. Yeah, the one little caveat to that is there's a power steering leak, and I'm trying to find it as we speak. I don't know that they are. So hopefully there won't be anything too major.
That's, that's the definition of a good leader, you've got them doing that while you're up here.
That's right.
All right. Next item, corporate council, Mr. Abel.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two quick items. If you recall, we annexed a property on Coolin Road, a month or two back, where the AAA storage is going to be built additional. Well, they had flat repairs. We ran it past the plating commission, and the plating commission voted to give their approval and send it to the council for approval. Likewise, the property that we sold off on Devers Road, we, basically, the law says if you subdivide property into tracts of less than five acres, you're supposed to plat it. So we, we had that done at the time, it was prepared at the time. We ran it through the plating commission, they recommended again that we approve it. And the only thing we're waiting on now, the, there was a notice that had to go to, oh, I don't know. Notice that we sent to the school board, because on the Platte Act, you send a notice to the school board on the, the plat approvals. It listed last night as our regular council meeting when we consider it. So in, just to make sure we got it all, I was calling our Ts, I pushed it back to the next council meeting, and so we'll come back to you at this next council meeting. In the meantime, I've also looked at the ordinance again, and looked, talked to the county clerk. And really, normally, the plating is done for a subdivision. But if you read, if you read the law, like I say, when you subdivide something off, or you divide it, carve off a piece smaller by acres, you're supposed to plat it. We treat that just as a plat of survey. He does over there, generally records it, so it doesn't require county approval. None of these involve new right of ways, new roads. It's not like a true subdivision. So, once we approve it, we'll send it over and have it recorded, and then it'll be there for posterity. But that's what each of these are. I didn't even bring the plats themselves tonight. Chad's got them. I'll bring them to the next meeting if you'd be honest to see them, but they're just drawn plats of these two properties. Property almost had them.
So you're both acting as, these are both the first reading tonight, then?
Yeah, this is first reading. You'll see them again next time, and next time, like I said, I'll bring the official plats. That's all I have.
Committee reports.
I would like to let all the aldermen know that we rejected Metro Holden's proposal last time, but he has contacted us back, and I, Eric and I, and Rick, all, has already met with him. And so you'll be hearing some more back from us in the future, okay? So this, although we rejected that, he's come back in with some negotiations. So we're back in dealing with you. So keep everybody up to date on that.
I would like the Waterline Street Committee, we'll have a meeting next Tuesday. I believe that's the twentieth, ten o'clock.
And this Thursday, we have a industrial committee. Mr. Barfield attended the tourism committee today, and.
That went well. We had a quorum and conducted a very short meeting, but very, very short, but it had a lot of content to it. It worked out real well. Had one resignation. So that will be, of course, coming, they'll bring us the official, put that in our agenda.
I don't know if anything else. Is there any news on the negotiations with Barfield?
Well, yeah. The ma, you can tell them, or I can tell them, it doesn't matter.
You got the floor, just go right ahead.
The mayor and I went along with the, Mr. Cruz, the president of the Port District, and the consultant for the Port District, Mr. Robinson. We had our first meeting with Ingram back a couple of weeks ago, I guess, on a Monday. And, I mean, it was last Monday, last Monday, I guess. And it felt like it was very productive. We still have, I mean, there's kind of a better sense of what each party kind of wants or wants to accomplish. Kind of started looking at, you know, could we physically accommodate each other, that sort of thing, and how could that be done? Each side has to sort of go back and look at some, kind of what we each had talked about, and because that, that would be, impact any kind of deal that's made. and, because that, that would be, impact any kind of deal that's made. We didn't, at this point, get down to hard numbers or anything like that. It was more kind of an information sharing meeting, an information exchanging meeting, looking at what actually was there and what's available. And I thought it was really productive, I mean, it was really positive, came away with a very positive feel for it. They, of course, they, each party is supposed to get back to the other and probably arrange another meeting in the near future. The, I'm kind of a little bit limited on what we can say because the Port District has signed a confidentiality agreement with them, so, and I feel like we need to honor that as well. But I will tell you, it was productive. I don't know if the mayor feels any different than what I said.
I thought it was a very good meeting, and actually, we stepped one, at least one step forward, made us feel a little more important, maybe. We actually got to go to their corporate office, which is in Nashville, that's where the meeting was at, so it showed good interest, I think, for everybody involved, and actually, even though yesterday was a holiday, I had a meeting with some folks yesterday with the Port District, two representative from the Port District, and two potential future prospects, and I thought that was a very, very, very good meeting. I mean, they actually come in, and I met with them yesterday afternoon, and I thought it was a very good meeting, and so far, every, and I, you know, I don't want to sound like a broken record, but I know there's several people on the council that's very concerned about, like we all are, about potential businesses and things like that, without actually somebody to actually spend all their time doing that. But I think Rick will tell you, we have seven, eight people on that port of nine, I guess all together, or eight, seven?
Sorry.
Seven. And it's just like having seven economic development people. They're spending a tremendous amount of time and effort. Mr. Lindsey is, you know, I guess, maybe the number one guru at Forest Railroads in our area, and he's spending unreal amount of time on it, so we're getting very good representation from the Port District that we're not having to pay them, and they're doing a lot of work. They've done a lot of contacts and a lot of follow-up and stuff like that, and I feel really, really good about everything that they're doing right now. I believe it's going to do something very good for us.
So, as far as time-wise, they're still getting extensions as far as their times?
Yeah, yeah, in fact, they kind of made it clear, they weren't that worried about the timeframes at this point. It didn't seem like that was a big concern, that, that, like I said, both sides seem pretty motivated. The only thing that, there's not more to say in the interim, just simply because right after we got back, Richard went on vacation, so he's gone, he was gone the last part of last week, part of this week, so, but we'll, we'll probably know more as time goes on. Going forward, we may need to have some of our discussions in closed sessions, just simply because I think it's gonna, as we get into numbers and things like that, particularly discussing the acquisition of real estate, we'll probably have closed sessions on these, but at the present time, there wasn't anything really that extensive.
Thank you. Department heads. Chief Massey.
Captain. We're doing good.
Chief Morris.
Nothing else.
I think at this time, Mayor.
Old business.
Your pumps are running good.
I'll let him freeze that.
Jerry's gonna bring that up in new business.
Oh, cool.
Okay. New business.
I have one item. I think congratulations are in store for Mr. Rick. He was elected as vice chair of I M E A Board of Ressures. Congratulations, Rick.
My thanks.
Wow.
Not bad for a guy who brought a plug in a lot.
Takes all kinds.
Well, and they've, we gotta turn the ladders.
Miscellaneous reports.
Oh, Mayor, I was going to mention, if you weren't, about the prayer vigil last evening, which was orchestrated by Mount Hord here in Metropolis on Pearl. It was a very good turnout. Mayor spoke for, spoke a few words el- el-.
My wife said it was impossible for me just to speak a few words.
It was. I agree with her. But it was real nice, and it was a good support by the community.
You know, and as David said, I, you know, I was going to bring something up to the last, but David was, was there, and I'm guessing, but I do know there was well over 100 people there, from every, every cross-section of walks of life, from business people to teenagers and younger, and as we mentioned earlier, and there's just a lot of people right now that's hurting in our community and things like that, that, you know, I urge everybody, you know, be mindful of the people around you, you know, there are different circumstances, everybody handles things a little bit different and things like that, so we need to be mindful of our friends, family, our neighbors, fellow workers, and stuff like that, of any signs or things like that that's out of the normal and stuff like that. It's, it's started something in our community that it certainly can hurt. You know, there's actually not only just civic groups and stuff like that, but there's probably, I got a letter today of a list of probably 20 local churches that are actually meeting, they're going to try to meet at least once a month, or as necessary. The first meeting for that would be the 29th of November at the First Baptist Church. Unfortunately, Mr. Massey and I will not, and they're actually calling for all elected type officials, anybody that's in a capacity of, in any organization, whether it be the city, the county, or whatever, that could help or knows, but that's actually, the 29th, I won't be able to be there, that's actually NRC, National Regulatory, is nuclear, are actually going to be in town for our annual meetings and things like that, on the 29th. There will be public meetings at our community center. They're gonna be here all day. Our first meeting with them starts at 1:30 in the afternoon, we have another one at 4:30 in the afternoon, another one at 6:00, and then the public meeting at 7:00, which will be held at the community center. And it's kind of gonna be a follow-up of the, of the, I think, excellent news we got a couple of weeks ago, where that Huntingwell is going to commit, and has committed, to making the money and the time and the facility to bring it up to standard, which is good for the city of Metropolis, I believe, because it is showing commitment on the company's side, that they're gonna be committing to millions of dollars to put these folks back to work, plus they moved their timetable up, they think there could possibly be people moving back into the plant that's been laid off, maybe even as nearest to latter part of January, first part of April, and they think they're gonna be back in full production by June the 1st, which will be a big, big deal for our community, so that's a good thing.
I just thought that zoning commission, I'd like to speak a little bit further into this. Just mentioning the mayor, zoning commission, I know you've all been kind of wondering what's going on with the zoning orders. Zoning commission met last week, they have settled on a final draft at this point, and have took action to set the public hearing dates on that. The public hearing dates right now are December the 20th and the 21st. Now, they're only, well, required to have one, but we're kind of erring on the side, this has taken so long to allow plenty of opportunity for people to look at it, comment on it. I anticipate by next week, we'll have it on our website, along with the proposed map. It'll be in the clerk's office and in the library. I've just got to get with Chad and make sure he gets the finer electronic version. Gina and I have to have one discussion on Monday. There was a definition that came up in the meeting that caused some heartburn for a couple people, so we're gonna resolve that, and, so it should be online next week. The way that works is they hold this hearing, of course, they're gonna be given notice, you're gonna probably see a bill come through for outlandish, malian publication, but we'll be, we'll be that bad, but they'll mail a notice to every property owner, as well as property owners within a mile and a half. The hearing will be held at the community center. The first night will be 7:00, hopefully be done by 10:00. The second day will start at 10:00 in the morning and quit at noon, or like, and that'll allow plenty of time for people to make comments, plus they can submit written comments if they, everybody will get a postcard telling them this. The, once that occurs, the zoning commission will take that, what, you know, what is produced along with their recommendation, and send it to the city council. Hopefully, that will occur probably by the first of the year. So, sometime in January, we should be looking at a new zoning ordinance, zoning map, to be approved by the city council.
We had a great attendance, that I think, out of both committees.
They probably have one person missing, maybe, or two.
I think they had two people missing, and they, we had a really, really good meeting. I mean, it was, it didn't, I, I didn't know, I thought maybe it might be a marathon meeting, you know, sometimes when you get into that, some of the littlest things, the little bitty things that you don't think anything about become pretty good issues. They've done their homework, everybody's gone through the paperwork, they'd, it was about, like, Mr. Abel, two or three items that was, you know, just minute and stuff like that, and it went very good, and without people like that, you know, that's willing to come up there at night and stuff like that, at 7:00 in the evening, and spend a couple hours going over all this stuff, I don't know how we'd ever get it done. And I did tell everybody there that how much the city of Metropolis, city council, did appreciate everything that they've done, so, and they were, they did a very good job. Anything else under miscellaneous reports? Financial report, payment of salaries, payroll, and contract bills.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Corzine, second by Mr. McManus. Call a roll, please.
Barfield, Brown, Carroll, Corzine, Daughery, McManus, Midnight, and Mizell. Thank you.
Payment of miscellaneous bills.
So move as well.
Moved by Mr. Corzine, second by Mr. McManus. Call a roll, please.
Barfield, Brown, Carroll, Corzine, Daughery, McManus, Midnight, and Mizell. Thank you.
We do not have a need for executive session. Mr. Daughery needs time to get home, get him a snack, and watch the ballgame comes on at 8:30. He's sorry.
Probably the only one.
Yeah, you're the only one.
Well, I'll make the motion with adjournment.
Motion made by Mr. Corzine, second by Mr. McManus.
So, one of these.
Barfield, Brown, Carroll, Corzine, Daughery, McManus, Midnight, and Mizell.